Again, good evening and welcome to all of you. We're turning the corner with last Sunday's middle of Advent celebration of Gaudete Sunday. Let us rejoice. And this week, we really can rejoice with the delivery of vaccines throughout our country and the approval, which hopefully is coming by the end of the week of the Moderna vaccine, which will double or triple the amounts of vaccines available. First of all, for our healthcare givers, doctors and nurses on the front line. So we give thanks to God for the gift of science and for the energy that they had to put in worldwide, worldwide cooperation to come up in with a vaccine in less than a year. Truly, truly miraculous. This evening, as we continue looking towards Christmas, and our guest today is Kathy McGovern. Kathy is with us from Denver, Colorado. And it's a joy to have her. You are familiar with Kathy, whether you know it or not, because for the last couple of years, at least, her column has been in our weekly bulletin. Kathy writes a wonderful column, "The Story and You," where she takes the week's gospel, the Sunday gospel, and connects it with a thread from human experience, her human experience, her observation of life and and her knowledge of scripture. I'm especially happy to have Kathy on board with us because several decades ago, 1980 to 86, I ministered in the diocese of Denver and had the good fortune of knowing Kathy there and enjoying her company on many occasions. So looking for you on the screen, and I want to remind everybody that if you click on the speaker view on the upper right hand corner, you can have just the speaker online and that it can be helpful during presentations. So Kathy, if you'll unmute yourself because we want to hear you and your voice, and I want to welcome you to St. Perpetua's in Lafayette, California.
Thank you so much, Father John. I cannot tell you how I've looked forward to getting to put faces to St. Perpetua Parish. It's such an honor to be in your bulletin every week. And I've wondered through the years, who are these wonderful people up in the Bay Area? And it's just lovely to see your faces. And I will begin by saying, telling same story that I told my husband tonight, which is, I really think the hardest I've ever laughed in my whole life was Christmas dinner with Father John and his confreres, the oblates, having a dinner over at their house. I'll never stop laughing. That's the hardest day I ever laughed in my life. So many, 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 many happy memories with Father John and his community.
Kathy, why don't you tell us a little bit about your background? Besides, you know, your personal writing and reflection, the story and you, you've done a lot with scripture over the years with catechesis and adult education. Give us a little bit of insight and background.
You know, I feel like I was really born at the perfect time. I knew from the very youngest age that I wanted to tell people about Jesus. That's what I was born to do. And when I think about the characters in the Christmas story, you know, the the Magi, the star, the angels, Mary, Joseph, I know for sure that I am the shepherd, because the shepherd left and went out and told everyone what they had seen. And that's, that's what I was born to do, was tell people about Jesus. I have always loved the liturgy and meditated on it far longer and deeper than any fifth grader probably should. But I came of age when they were offering masters in liturgical studies. And so I went to the University of Notre Dame and got a master's degree in liturgy. And then, to my horror, I started this brand new program in Denver called the Denver Catholic Biblical School, which is certainly the premier adult religious education school to teach every book in the Bible over a four-year period. And I started that the day after I graduated from Notre Dame, I started as a student in the biblical school. And the first 20 seconds of class, I knew that's really what I wanted to do. I wanted to teach scripture. I had to teach scripture. And so I went through and got my certificate from the biblical school and got a master's in scripture and was very fortunate to get to be on the staff, on the faculty of the Denver Catholic Biblical School. And from there, then, I was there for 17 years and then retired. I've had a lot of significant health challenges, which I will have to regale you with in a moment. And I just decided I needed to retire. And besides, I wanted to write. And so ever since I retired 13 years ago from teaching full-time, I have been writing the story in you for parish bulletins to help break open the word in 280 words. And it's been a huge, it's been a huge grace. And so that's, I got to know Father John and the oblates when I was working at St. Roosevelt Lima in Denver as the liturgist and music director. And my great friend, Father Jack Lockren, was the pastor there in Father John's community. And so that's how I got to know that whole tribe.
And Jack is now our provincial.
Yes.
How far we've come.
Yeah. Yes.
Great.
Yes.
So this evening, tell us what, we've been talking and reflecting a lot about hope during this Advent season. Hope also combined with our world's predicament with the pandemic. And Gina, who's online with us tonight, sent me this week, reminded me of the poem by Emily Dickinson, "Hope is that thing with feathers that perches in the soul and sings the tune without the words and never stops at all." So we hope that you can inspire our hope tonight.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I've been thinking about that poem, really, I think probably since Sunday, when we lit the three candles and lit that pink candle. And I just love Gaudete Sunday. I love the whole week of Gaudete. And I've worn my pink in honor of of the pink, the rejoicing that we are all invited to. And it has been a challenge, has it not, to find the joy in this year. It has been, it's been a horrible year. And as I've been reflecting on, you know, joy, this is what I've come up with. All right. So what is the future? If, if joy is to be our future, what do you see when you picture the future? You know, when I was two, everybody in Denver knows this story, you know, to death. So let me tell it to you really fast. When I was two, I got the chickenpox. When I recovered from the chickenpox, I couldn't walk. Somehow, the infection had settled in my hip socket and pulled the bone out of the socket. So I spent two months in children's hospital, you know, with my little leg on the traction bar, putting the bone back in the socket. So it was always arthritic as I was growing up. It got worse as I got older. And so I've had a number of hip replacements. And in 2004, I got ovarian cancer, the cancer that killed my mother. I am now the longest living survivor of ovarian cancer at Rock Mountain Cancer Center in Denver. I will be 17 years out in three months. Um, following that, I got leukemia, chronic myelogenous leukemia, which is one of the good guys. It's one of the easier leukemias. And on the heels of that, I got a staph infection that has been trying to kill me ever since. So 13 years ago, I had a catastrophic staph infection. They had to take the prosthetic hip out. That was infected. I had, I sustained considerable nerve damage on the right side of my body. And so I have gone to every possible specialist trying to correct it. And six weeks ago, I had a spinal cord stimulator implanted in my spinal cord. So those are two wires connected to a battery that is now permanently sticking out of my, my back. And that battery talks to this guy, which is a remote control. And the remote control is programmed to send a kind of a tingly, seven-uppy pain disruptor throughout the right side of my body, so that it scrambles the messages of pain going to my brain. It scrambles that so that my brain only gets maybe 50% of that. We're gonna see. The verdict is kind of still out on this. I've had it for six weeks now. My, we're gonna see. Anyway, this is the future that at this moment stretches ahead of me. Slothful mornings where I dread getting out of bed because I know those steps to the bathroom and the kitchen are gonna just kill. Decreased mobility as this device works less and less, if it's working at all. Hours and hours of Netflix. My patient husband urging me onto planes to remote places where miracles are supposed to be taking place. Old age setting in. Needing to hire help with the house and with getting dressed in the times when Ben is out of town. The other tragedy is that our church has never recovered from the pandemic. When everything opened up again, millions of Catholics who had stayed home on Sunday for the first time in their lives realized how much they loved having Saturday morning free. And they never came back. A sadness hovers over my life with empty churches and orthopedic problems so painful that I give up and don't move from the chair or the bed. I survived the pandemic, but not the pain that's threatened me all my life and finally attacked with the viciousness of a pack of dogs. Every day is a challenge to get through. And pain always wins. That's one future. But that is not going to be my future. And that is not going to be our future as a church. Because God has promised us a future and a hope. A future of fullness, not of harm. I can see myself healed and walking 100% able again, riding my bike, swimming, working out at the gym, traveling to all the places Ben's been dying to get to these last several years. This nerve damage is either gone or so under control, I can manage long plane rides and bike rides and walks to the park. In fact, I gotta say, I had the best day I've had in years today. I think it's working. I think it's working. All of us are here. The pandemic has been under control for years with no sign of a return. And our churches are packed again. The pandemic created a longing in people for community. They returned for friendship and support. And on the way, they found the true meaning of their lives to be in relationship with Jesus Christ. And you should hear the singing. And the preaching is fantastic. And the assemblies are full with people hungry to work for justice because they worked hard back in that terrible year of 2020 to understand the issues of justice so much better. From the ashes of heartbreak and disease came the fulfillment of the promise of that verse from Amazing Grace, "The Lord has promised good to me. His word my hope secures. He will my shield and portion be as long as life endures." His word my hope secures. So what does his word say? You know it, Romans 5, 3 to 5. Not only this, we exalt in our tribulations, knowing that tribulation brings perseverance, perseverance, character, character, hope, and hope does not disappoint. Can we really dare to hope? Scripture says we can, even this time of great tribulation. Have you persevered this year? Have you maintained at least one good habit? I have not gained the COVID-19 yet, but there are a few months to go. I have maintained a few good habits. I cook most nights. I never leave a dish in the sink overnight. I've never missed mass throughout this whole shutdown because our parish did such a fantastic job of streaming mass every weekend. Now, I haven't used my time as well as I could. I haven't cleaned out closets or organized my photos, even though I have had all this time. But I have participated in every enriching class my parish offered, especially after the George Floyd murder. I've participated in online conversations, a faith and racial justice class, and book clubs that have taught me so much about the history of racism and its systemic presence in the world. I have persevered in that learning, even when it's been more challenging than I was up for. I think that perseverance has formed a stronger character in me. Anytime we persevere in anything, it forms character, doesn't it? And I find that deluged as we are in terrible news, I percolate with hope. We are going to recover from this physically, financially, spiritually, even those who have experienced the most dreadful of losses during this pandemic. The Lord has promised good to us. His word our hope secures. Tribulation brings perseverance. Perseverance brings character. Character brings hope. And hope does not disappoint. The thing about hope is that it doesn't actually change anything today, right? I'm hopeful that every one of us and every person within the large circle of love, which is encompassed by all of you and all your families and all your loved ones tonight. I'm hopeful that we are all going to survive this pandemic. But having the hope of a vaccine on the horizon doesn't change anything today. Hope is kind of its own remedy. Hope works not because it's here, but because there's hope, that there is hope that it's here. Um, I so often think about this experience when I had this surgery for ovarian cancer 17, almost 17 years ago. My husband Ben came into the room afterwards and he said, yeah, I'm not worried. Doctor Donato says he cured you. That was the surgeon. And I said, really? He said, yeah, he said, yeah, I cured her. I don't think I was ever worried from that day on because the surgeon himself had said he cured me. Well, about a year into my recovery, I mentioned that to Doctor Donato. And he said, I never said that. I would never say that. I would never tell the spouse of an ovarian cancer patient that I cured his spouse. And I said, well, my husband swears you did. I swear I didn't. So I was talking to our pastor at our parish about this the other day. And he said, well, knowing Ben as well as I do, who do you think said to Ben, yeah, I cured her? I mean, he saw Doctor Donato's lips moving, but who was really talking? The Holy Spirit. I mean, how else is the Holy Spirit gonna speak except through all of us, except through people? My husband heard the Holy Spirit in the person of the surgeon say, I cured her. And because of that hope, you know, I had, I had hope. And you know, I'm almost 17 years out from the longest living survivor at Rock Mountain Cancer Center. So tonight, after we, after we leave each other, consider this question. When have you heard the voice of God in another person? And this is the harder one. When have you been the voice of God for another person? Have you ever had anybody stop you sometime and say, boy, I will never forget what you said to me that day? And you have long ago forgotten what you said to them? But they didn't. They somehow heard the voice of God through your voice. What does Teresa of Avila say? You know, from now on, God has no hands or heart or voice except yours. So that's how God speaks through us. I'd like to talk about some scriptural characters who personify a future and a hope. The first is Hagar. You know, we can't ever talk enough about Hagar. That poor slave girl dragged out of Egypt by Abraham and Sarah, brought from her home up into Canaan to be their, be their servant. And Sarah, the matriarch, the one from whom the promised one is supposed to come. Because remember, the promise that God gave to Abraham was that he and Sarah would have a son. And from that son would come the 12 tribes and then the whole nation of Israel and then eventually Jesus himself. Well, Sarah didn't trust this. Sarah was very old by this point. And she says to Abraham, look, you've got that, you've got that African slave girl. Go have intercourse with her and get you a son. You gotta have a son. You'd have somebody to pass your inheritance on to. This was very common in those days. And so he did. Now, whenever in scripture we hear the story about a woman becoming pregnant, 100% of the time, it is gonna be a boy. It's gonna be a boy, a son that Hagar is going to have. And of course, it just happens one time. They have intercourse. One time, she gets pregnant with a son. Now, this is kind of interesting because I mean, when it first happened, when they first brought Hagar up from Egypt and when she first, you know, was, it was decided that they would use her as the surrogate. Boy, they just thought the world of her. Sarah thought the world of her. She probably couldn't do enough for her. But after Hagar got pregnant, then Sarah felt like this slave girl doesn't have any respect for me anymore because she got pregnant and I didn't. Get rid of her. And Abraham, what a poor excuse for a father. I mean, this is the mother of his child. And he says, oh, okay. Okay. Yeah, you want me to get rid of her? Sure, I'll get rid of her. And he banishes her to the desert. So this poor, young African girl, pregnant in the desert, left to die. She is weeping. And an angel calls to her and says, Hagar, why do you weep? She's like, I'm dying out here in the desert. I'll die with my unborn child with me because Sarah doesn't want anything to do with me. And the angel says to her, go back and put up with her because I am going to give you a future and a hope. The son that you bear will be the father of a great nation. Just trust that there is a future in this child. And so she went back. And then later in the story, after her son Ishmael is born in, you know, is like 10 years old. By this time, Sarah has had Isaac, the promised child. And now she can't stand the sight of Hagar. Get rid of that woman and that son of yours, she says to Abraham. I don't want him getting any of my son's inheritance. And Abraham again says, okay, bye-bye. And off, he banishes her and his own son out into the desert. And again, Hagar is weeping because she knows that they will die. And again, the angel comes to her. And Hagar says, I'm dying of thirst. My child is dying of thirst. And the angel points out the spring in the desert, says, well, there's water. There's everything you need. And don't forget the promise. Take the water, drink, and go on. Go on and find a life. Find a home outside of Canaan. Go back to your own homeland. Because this son of yours is going to be the father of a great nation. And I love this, Hagar, this little African slave girl is the first person in scripture to give God a name. And she says, from now on, this is the God who sees me. For God saw me out in this wilderness where I didn't think there'd ever be a soul. And God saw me. And God has given me a future and a hope. And so she drinks from the water from the spring. And by the way, I think that spring had been sitting in that desert from the beginning of time, so that Hagar could find that spring and drink from it and be saved. And of course, her son Ishmael became the father of the entire Arab race. So she is the first scriptural character that I always think of when I think of a future and a hope. And then I love, and we had this story recently in the lectionary in the liturgy. I love the guy who's paralyzed and his friends love him so much and are so full of hope that this Jesus has shown up in town. And they've tried to get him, they've tried to get in the house where Jesus is because they've heard that he performs miracles. But there are so many people in the house that they can't get in. So they drag their friend. And I hope that you have friends who love you this much. They put this guy on a mat and they hauled him carrying his pallet across town. And when they got to the house, they took the tiles of the roof off and lowered him down the roof so that he could see Jesus. Think of the hope. Think of the faith that it took these friends of his Think of the hope. Think of the faith that it took these friends of his to haul him all the way across town and take the tiles off the roof to lower him down so that Jesus could heal him. And then Jesus says to him, very anticlimactic, go in peace, your sins are forgiven. And I'm sure that everybody thought, we didn't ask for his sins to be forgiven. Who are you to forgive sins? We asked that he could walk because we heard that when you were, you know, in that other village, you cured paralyzed people. So we want you to cure our friend. And Jesus kind of as an afterthought says, oh, is that all? We'll get up and walk. Your faith has saved you. But that wasn't the greatest miracle. The greatest miracle was that this man who can now walk also had his sins forgiven and had that great burden taken from him as well. That's a future and a hope. The hope, I think, was in his friends who hoped for him. And the future is what this guy has now. Not only can he walk, but his sins are forgiven. He's gonna start all over. The third person who I think of, when I think of a future and a hope, is a recently canonized saint, Saint Josephine Bautista. I think that I heard, and Father John helped me with this. I think I've heard that a lot of work is being done in the Bay Area and the parishes in the Bay Area on trafficking, on human trafficking.
Yes, we've, the, the diocese has started an initiative for a shelter to help take up young women, young girls really, out of street trafficking and give them hope, you know, for our new.
That's beautiful. That's beautiful.
Uh, we, we've mentioned Saint Bautista last week. We looked at Juliana of Norwich more fully. But Jan Stechner mentioned, and so I'm glad that you'll address her. Because I, I think especially for the issues that we're dealing with when it comes to race and to trafficking and so on. She has an amazing story.
She does. And you know, I had never heard of her until, you know, a few years ago. She was canonized by Pope John Paul the Second. Um, her feast day is February eighth. She is the patroness of the Sudan and a victim of human trafficking. In the Sudan, she is known as Nostra Madre Moreta, which is our black mother. Her story of emancipation from enslavement reminds us to pray for all victims of human trafficking around the world. She was born in eighteen sixty-nine in Sudan. Um, she was born in the village of Ogosa, which is near Darfur, Sudan. She had sisters and brothers and loving parents. But one day, when she was out in the field working with her mother, some slave traffickers abducted her and sold her into slavery. And not just once, but she was sold multiple times. And her owners, being very sarcastic, named her Bautista, which means fortunate one. And yet, they did not know how prophetic they were. They had given her a future and a hope because they had named her fortunate one. And that is exactly who she became. After the years of trauma that she endured, she couldn't remember the name her parents had given her. So she just adopted Bautista as from then on. She lived and worked in various locations in Africa until an Italian consul bought her and moved her family back to Italy. Bautista became a nanny for this new family. And she and her young charge lived at the convent run by the Canotian sisters in Venice. And of course, this was something used to happen all the time. Young children were raised by nuns in convents. And since she was the nanny, this was her opportunity for the first time in her life to hear the name of Jesus. And it was the name of Jesus that changed her life, that fulfilled the name given her. She was indeed the fortunate one. The Canotian sisters went to court on her behalf and obtained her freedom. And for the rest of her life, she remained in Italy as a free woman. She converted to Christianity and was baptized and confirmed in eighteen ninety. She became a Canotian nun in eighteen ninety-six and remained there for forty-two years. She dedicated the rest of her life to serving God, the other sisters in her community, and humankind. She was a much beloved and respected member of her community. Children and adults flocked to her, enjoying her good heart, her good nature, her good works, and her love of people. But that was not the end of the story. You know, she died and then hundreds of ordinary people came to see her lying in state. And along with these visits came all these stories of all the comfort that she had given people throughout these forty-two years. Almost immediately, graces and miracles attributed to her intercession began to be reported. Wouldn't that be the coolest thing if after your death, people started reporting miracles associated with your intercession? Is it wrong that I want that so much? I just think that would be the coolest thing to, um, to have somebody healed of something because I was able to intercede for them. I don't know how that works. But that's how I want to spend eternity, for sure. And by the way, I am saving locks of my husband's hair because I live with an actual saint. I'm saving his portions of his hair for when they do the canonization process because I'll be ready. So he, she was canonized in two thousand by John Paul the Second. And her feast day became the first international day of prayer and reflection on human trafficking. I'm wearing tonight, along with my pink gaudete, I'm wearing my purple earrings. I don't know if you can see them, but I got these from a group called Joy International. They are some courageous people. They go to Thailand and walk into the brothels where these poor, young women are held. And they find ways to get them out. They, they run interventions. Very, very scary and dangerous interventions. And I assume that when you start the shelter up there, that's who you're gonna have at the shelter, are young girls and women who were rescued by some brave people who went in and got them. Wherever they are, in this country particularly, you don't have to go to Thailand, in this country. And finally, Our Lady of Guadalupe. You know, in Denver, we know a lot about Our Lady of Guadalupe. But is she well-known to you all up in the Bay Area? Do you know a lot about her? In Denver, you know, you can hear some really stunning lectures about Our Lady of Guadalupe from these scholars from Mexico who have studied the tilma of Juan Diego in the cathedral in Mexico City. And I don't know if you've heard all this fascinating stuff that is coming out about that, that moment when Our Lady of Guadalupe introduced herself to Juan Diego. But I just think it's stunning and talk about a future and a hope. So recall that when she appeared to Juan Diego, she appeared on the hill of Tepea, which was the hill where the goddess of Mexico was worshipped. Now, recall that the Aztecs had a very developed religious life. They had gods and goddesses for everything. And for the most, in some ways, this provided a stability and a comfort to the day-to-day life of the Aztec people. On the other hand, the unbelievable and grotesque human sacrifice that went on night and day at the Aztec temple was cried out to God for, for justice. And when the conquistadors arrived, one of the first things they saw was that temple and human beings having their hearts torn out to appease the Aztec gods. And so one of the first things the conquistadors did was smash the temple when they waged war against the Aztec kings. In the process, they smashed Aztec religion so that by the time Our Lady of Guadalupe encountered Juan Diego, who had converted to Catholicism because of the friars who were there from Spain, the Aztec people, the Indians, were utterly demoralized and in tremendous pain because their gods and goddesses were disallowed with these new friars, with these new Spaniards. They couldn't have gods and goddesses. And here comes Juan Diego passing the hill of Tepea. And the beautiful lady appears to him. She has a black band around her waist, which in that culture means she's pregnant. There are stars around her. And all of this showed up on the tilma, Juan Diego's sort of apron-like thing that he put on the day that he, she told him, go to the bishop, tell him I want a church here. Well, the bishop said, I need more signs than that. So he went back and told the beautiful lady, the bishop needs a sign. And she said, oh, well, why don't you pick those roses that are blooming behind me and put them in your tilma and take them to the bishop? Roses on the twelfth of December. Imagine seeing roses in December. And not just any rose. They were Castilian roses. Roses from Spain that bloomed in the very village where the bishop, who, who had come from Spain to minister to the Aztecs in Mexico City. That was where he was from. The roses that showed up on that hill were the roses that he knew, not indigenous to Mexico in any way. So here comes Juan Diego with these roses. And he goes to the bishop and he says, the lady told me to give you these. And the roses come pouring out of his tilma. And then everyone stands back because on the tilma is imprinted la virgen de la Guanipana, the virgin, and her imagen, her image. And on this image, we see, we can still see. Have you ever been to Mexico City to see the tilma? It's quite something. So along the left and right of the tilma are stars. I don't know how they proved this, but astronomers and scientists did all kinds of mathematical equations. And they were able to determine that the stars on that tilma exactly image the constellation of the stars on December twelfth, fifteen thirty-one. That morning, the stars were in that direct position. And this is the most amazing thing. Have you heard the thing about the iris and the pupil of the Amahay? A, some sort of scientist took photographs of her eyes. And because her eyes are quite enigmatic, they kind of looked down. But they took photographs and magnified them many, many hundreds of thousands of times. And we're astonished to find that in the pupil, let me get this right. It's, it's as if in her pupil, her pupils took a photograph. And the photograph exists in the pupil of her eyes. So that in the pupil, you can see the bishop kneeling. You can see Juan Diego. You can see the people who were present in that room that day when Juan Diego's tilma overflowed with these Castilian roses. And it was like all time stopped. From that moment, really before, from the moment that the virgin appeared to Juan Diego as a pregnant Aztec girl. You know, when the, when the conquistadors came in, we know that they raped many, many, many Aztec women. And instead of being ashamed of these children, look at the beautiful lady who looks like us and speaks our language. She doesn't speak Spanish like the friars. She speaks the Aztec language and she looks like an Aztec girl who is pregnant. Therefore, our Aztec girls who are pregnant because they were raped by the Spaniards, their children can be part of us too. And then followed the greatest conversion to Catholicism in the history of the world. After the, after the experience of Our Lady of Guadalupe, the miracle. So those are a few of the people in the scriptures and in tradition who speak to me of a future and a hope. When the Aztecs had no hope, here comes the mother of Jesus, dressed like them, looks like them, talks like them, pregnant like their daughters are pregnant, to give them a future and a hope. And of course, that is where the word Mexican comes from. The child of a Spaniard and an Indian is a mestizo or a Mexican. I don't know how I never knew that. I didn't know that until a few years ago. So, you know, when we think about Emmanuel means God with us here, right here. Yeah. Right here, Josephine Bautista. Right here, Hagar. Right here, the paralyzed man. Right here, Our Lady of Guadalupe. And so, you know, another question that I would leave you with tonight is, how have you seen God present this year here in the middle of this pandemic? Have we not all seen the most extraordinary acts of love, generosity, kindness? You know, our neighborhood kept up the howl. Well, we, we kind of are still doing it. Couple of times a week, we still do the howl to recognize the heroic healthcare workers who go into the lion's den every day for us. That's Emmanuel. That is God with us. The people, in my opinion, who are in the grocery store checking out my groceries, that is God with us. The, the, all the healthcare workers, all the bus drivers, the subway drivers. Uh, everybody, all of the people without whose service we couldn't function as a society, the essential workers who have died in such dreadful numbers. That is God with us. And so, you know, I leave you tonight asking, where have you seen God this year? How has God been with you this year? My husband Ben was fortunate enough to be part of the Moderna vaccine study. So he got the vaccine. So he got the vaccine a couple months ago. And he is quite sure he got the vaccine because. The first one that he got, you know, his symptoms were just a sore arm. But the booster that he got a month later, he had, you know, that. That'll knock you out for a day. So just, you know, fair warning. When you get the booster, make sure you've got the day off the next day. Because, you know, he had a high fever and a sore arm, but then it went away in twenty-four hours. So when you get your vaccine, hold out the hope because when you get the booster. You'd probably be a little uncomfortable for a day. But after that, you're vaccinated and we can all get back. To our lives. And so, yes, thank you. Yes, amen, amen.
Yes, thank you and amen, Kathy.
And so I, I'd like to close with a poem, Christmas in the Time of COVID. That will be in your bulletins on the Feast of the Holy Family. Is that okay, Father John?
Yes.
Christmas in the time of COVID. At this point, we all know the drill. Stay away, keep your distance, wait this out. But God knows our tensions, our anxieties, our weakened immune systems. God did not stay away nor keep a safe distance, nor wait for a more receptive world to greet him. He came in the time of occupation and disease and famine and war. God with us, even in our isolation and masks and worrisome coughs. Maranatha, come, Lord Jesus, and pitch your tent with every grieving child. Every feverish grandparent, every lonely person looking for your face. Comfort, give comfort to your people, oh God. And speak tenderly to us that this year of misery has ended. And we are found in your grace. Amen.
Amen. You know, Kathy, it'll be, uh, wonderful for us to read, uh, the story and you columns now. You know, having met you, uh, and having, uh, heard you in person. Those columns will mean a, a lot more to us. Interestingly, early on in the pandemic. Trying to, like you, you know, come up with, you know, what words to say and, you know, how to encourage. Uh, people and so on. And I had just, uh, collected a number of quotes on hope. Uh, and that was probably in, in May or June. Uh, just share a couple of them. One was from Maya Angelou. Love recognizes no barriers. It jumps hurdles, leaps fences, penetrates walls. To arrive at its destination full of hope. Billy Graham said, God's mercy and God and grace give me hope for myself and for our world. Desmond Tutu, your ordinary acts of love and hope point to the extraordinary promise. That every human life is of inestimable value. Martin Luther King Junior, we must accept finite disappointment, but never lose infinite hope.
I love that. Finite disappointment, infinite hope.
And then, of course, our, our scriptures, uh, from the book of Job, you will be secure because there is hope. You will look about you and take your rest in safety. And Paul's letter to the Romans, may the God of hope fill you with all joy and peace as you trust in him. So that you may overflow with hope by the power of the Holy Spirit. And you remind me tonight that I, our lives need to be based on that primary, uh, virtue and gift, gift of hope. So thank you very much. A couple of announcements. Joanne Munch had, uh, sent me some information about an African seminarian. Uh, that she has become familiar with and, uh. Powerful stories of somebody who's been captured by the love of Jesus and wants to dedicate his life. Much like Bautista, uh, from the Sudan. But of course, the means to do that are very challenging. And, um, his, his training for seminary, uh, is costly, but his parents, you know, can't afford it. So, um, Joanne, if you'll put your, um, phone number or email in the chat room. If anybody wants to contact Joanne and, you know, maybe even offer, um, some financial help and support. Uh, for the young seminarian, uh, she can give you details about that. Um, we're collecting Christmas photos of families and individuals in the parish to use. At our, uh, Sunday, uh, experience, Sunday worship experience. So on our, um, uh, timely perpetual and, uh, our newsletter. Uh, there'll be a link where you can send your photo. A lot of families have their, uh, Christmas card, which is their family photo. And if you have that online, just, uh, send that to us and, uh, we'll put them together. So that even though we can't be together physically, uh, we'll be able to connect with one another through those, uh, pictures. Then, um, next week, uh, the last Wednesday of Advent before Christmas. Father Ryan Thornton will be with us. Many of you will remember Ryan. He was a, uh, he's a Franciscan and he was a seminarian a few years ago who did some internship. At, uh, Saint Perpetual and helped with our, uh, youth ministry and our middle school faith formation. And at the time, uh, one of the things he was interning with. I said, well, if you're gonna be ordained, you've got to know how to preach. And, um, so I, I, you know, brought him in to preach. And if you recall, it was like he had, uh, been born doing it. He was very, very good. And now he's been ordained. Um, he's been studying in Paris and in Rome. Um, uh, the last few years, but he's back in the States at least now. And he's gonna join us and he's got an assignment for you. Um, he is a scholar, but, so you need to have a pencil and paper with you next week. And he asks that you reflect on the question, oh, why did God become one of us? John's Gospel said, the word became flesh and dwelt among us. And he wants us to wrestle with the, with the question of why, why did God become one of us? Why did God take on our, our humanity? So pencil and paper and reflect on the incarnation. Okay, I, uh, uh. That's it for the evening. I want to thank you all for being here. I want to, uh, thank Kathy, Kathy, uh, you know, so much. For sharing your, uh, insight and, uh, your own, uh, hope-filled life. Uh, that you live and that you have shared for so long with so many others. And I'm glad to be a recipient of that hope thirty, forty years ago in Denver and now today. And I hope you'll consider joining us, uh, again sometime.